Okay, the chair is going to call this meeting. I'll commission this to order. Item number one, I adjourned this to move the non-public session for personal. The reason to discuss personal matter, that is a council. I have a motion by Commissioner Levin to move it to non-public. Thank you for sharing, I'll second that. If you're in favor of Commissioner Levin, say aye. The sound, yes, the vote is unanimous, so the commission will retire to executive session. Return when we're done. All right, the commission is back from non-public session. I'm gonna ask for a motion on item five to approve the minutes of session nineteen. You have a motion to break, Commissioner Levin, and I'll second it. To accept the minutes, you have any changes or amendments to the minutes? I'm hearing you in favor, I'm assuming Commissioner Levin, myself, the voters unanimous on the minutes. Now, what's supposed to meet with Paki Campbell regarding this county solar project two?
He verified he'd be here.
He did?
Yeah.
He had been in Europe and was due back this morning.
While we're on this, before we get on the subject, I'm sure Paki-
Well, we're a few minutes early.
Yeah. Doug, what's going on with the cogeneration stuff that I talked to you about earlier with EverSource? What's the status with all that?
Right now with EverSource, we have a meeting on Monday at, I want to say nine AM. We'll listen and call for an update on that.
Okay.
I'm hoping to bring in the piece of the puzzle of what Paki says today. We had a pretty good meeting with him last week or the week before, doing a survey of the area, and I got them all the information they needed.
Yeah, yeah, Doug was kind enough to meet with him, get him the information he needed. I invited Mr. Campbell to last week's meeting, but he was going to Europe. But was due back today, so he did agree last week to come today, so.
Yeah, I spoke to him this morning. All right. All right, well, that works. I'd just like to be able to get moving on some of these things that have been sitting around for a while.
Yeah. How are you?
How are you?
I'm well.
So, you can see that?
I haven't seen you in a while.
I haven't seen you in a while.
There we are.
How are you, sir? Two o'clock, right on time, George, right?
Right, I know, man.
Oh, it's been early, nice to see you, how are you?
Sean, what up?
Sean, how are you? Thanks for calling me. This is Fu Xiang, I don't know what you're doing here, but that's great.
I'm Ray Bauer.
Ray Bauer?
Yeah, we spoke on the phone, sir.
Yeah.
I remember when you were in there.
Jim Shannon?
Hey. Yeah.
I didn't catch you.
Hi, Jim Shannon?
Jim Shannon. So, Jim is in-house attorney for me, and we've worked together for the last twenty-five years, doing various real estate development projects and solar projects, and he helps me with all of the stuff.
Okay.
And should we move forward, which I hope we do, he would be instrumental in helping us write an agreement that was acceptable to the county for, you know, our power construction contract. Can't hear people, call it, and you can see. But he would just, I'd just like him to hear the initial meeting to get a sense of what you guys are looking for. Then if we move to a contract stage, he'll be able to kind of fill in the blanks and and he'll pick up on when you roll your eyes at me that, oh, I just did that. Yeah, whatever the case may be. I only brought three of these little handouts, which really are just some color pictures to make sure we understand the technology. But before we get into that, I'd kind of like to just get a sense of what you guys are looking for. Like, do you want to post a bond and buy solar and own solar? Are you looking for a company to build you a solar project and value your power in this account?
It was, you know, there's all kinds of ways, you know, skin the cat. At our initial, our initial discussions was to make the county land available through the private sector. And we would have some kind of a lease agreement and purchase electricity at a cheaper rate. That was the first take we had on it. We've had a multiple number of solar companies get in touch with us over the past couple of years that come in and they say, well, we want to do A, B, C, D. And then we ended up getting a federal grant that was supposed to hire, we can't, we couldn't hire the, they were going to be our technical assistants for us. The federal grant, we got the grant, we had a meeting, one Zoom meeting around Colorado. Then their money got cut by the Trump administration, when Trump came in, cut the money. And then we asked them if we could continue to pay them on our own, and they said they had no interest in that. And then all of a sudden, boom, they came back into the picture, Trump, Trump's administration put them back into picture. Now, we don't get to select them. Okay, that was some of the problems with it, and.
They're based in Alaska.
Yeah, yeah, now they're, yeah, they're based, they're-
They used to be based in Colorado, now they're based in Alaska.
Yeah, so, in any event, what we're looking at is, what we were looking at. And again, this may not be what we should be doing yet, but we were at the time, we were looking at five KW capacity. We use about one KW a year, we were looking to build five. Just if we could pump it into the grid or sell it to someone as a user, you know, and we have all those other things. You guys know in your business, in your industry. But we wanted to build as big a run as we could, because we had enough land to do that on. And we had a number of sites that we had picked out at the time. This is back a few years ago, okay, so, which could change. So, that's kind of where we are, we really don't, we don't know whether we should own it, we really don't want to own it. On the other hand, it might be in our interest to own it, we don't know enough about the nitty-gritty. So much has changed since the new administrations come in. It's difficult to, you know, the tax incentives used to be thirty percent, they go away, I guess they went away July first for the private sector, and now it's down to like twenty, and that's supposed to go away in like another year or two, but I don't know whether that's going to happen or not. I mean, there's just so much going on in your industry. We're having difficulty, because we were stalled, I stalled up by the consultants, so.
The theory of the consultants was, they answered those questions.
Right.
You know, the, well, what's in our, to outline what's in our best interest? Would it be to, you know, do it privately? Would it be to do it ourselves? Would it be, you know, this is what they were supposed to do a year ago.
Right.
And it was free, in the sense that it was a government grant. Unfortunately, though, as Christian Regara said, they didn't, the federal government didn't allow us to pick somebody. They said, this is a company that's going to do it for you. So, it was free and it seemed attractive at the time, in the sense that it was free independent assessment.
Right.
And, and of course, you know, the frustrating part about that is that for six or eight months, it stopped. And then all of a sudden, they call us and says it started again, but it was like we started all over again.
And they're saying, well, what do you want to do? You know, well, like, that's what just supposed to-
Well, the good news is, I'm not afraid to give you advice, and I'm not afraid to tell you, these are your options, and here's what I would do, and here's why. And I can do that for free in about the next fifteen minutes. We do enough of these projects that we know what they look like, how they look like. And realistically, it's really about the regulations here in New Hampshire. So recently, you're a municipal
Right.
user, so you could do up to a five-megawatt project and still get net billing. It's important you understand that net billing is not net metering. So that means if you send a kilowatt to the grid, you don't get to bank it and take it back at night. You send a kilowatt to the grid, you're getting paid the default rate credit on your bill. And you take a kilowatt at night, you're going to pay twice what they gave you for a credit. Thanks. So it's not the best net metering here in New Hampshire, because you essentially get paid eleven point two cents. And then at night, when you take it, they're going to charge you eleven point two cents, plus distribution, plus demand charges.
Right.
So you're, your bill right now, you pay an average of fifteen cents a kilowatt. So all I did was I took your bill, and I said, you use this many kilowatts, eighty-three thousand seven hundred kilowatts, divided about what your bill costs, that was fifteen cents. That's not a bad rate. You've got a bad rate because two of your meters are large customer generators, meaning they're on a different old billing system with EverSource, they're not a regular bill. The Hyder House is a regular bill, normal. Ray, you signed a competitive electric supplier, which right now is saving you money, although it wasn't saving you money last month. So you're paying a little over eight cents, the default rate was like eight cents. Your net metering, your competitive electric supplier, Nesterra, gives you a contract. The next contract's going to be higher, because the default rate's higher. How do I know that? That's the way it works. If you're going to do net metering with the state of New Hampshire and have solar, they don't let you have a competitive electric supplier, you have to have EverSource as your supplier. Which means your credit is going to be eleven point two cents, because EverSource is your supplier. So that's good, because our technology, unlike other solar technology, we need a five-megawatt system. If you look in the last page of this book, and I actually have a couple, just in case that I pointed in some little flyer, in some stuff, but that gives you your total, thank you Doug, by the way, your total annual usage was essentially four point seven megawatts, or four hundred sixty, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight kilowatt hours of electricity is what everything you have going on here is used in a year.
So, where is that? Is it in here, Paki?
It should be.
Let me see, I'm stuck with pages of something. Last page of Attic?
Very last page, of course not.
Well.
All right, well luckily I have extra copies. So basically, the spreadsheet that I handed out a few copies of, you have the courthouse Riverside, which is also the prison, because that's the prison in Riverside, they're tied together, Hyder House. So your total usage is four million six hundred ninety-eight thousand.
So that's almost like five megawatt, right?
That's like your, so what's tough with solar, and it takes a lot to understand, that's the pond, that's the hose filling into the pond, running for a year.
Yeah.
Five megawatts.
Right.
All right, so one megawatt running for a year, make about two megawatts, if you had a one-megawatt solar. So if I had a solar inverter with one megawatt, one megawatt for solar trackers, it would make two megawatts of annual production, so in this, in this flyer, I did this as the first one, because first thing you got to ask yourselves is, can the guy deliver on what he's going to ask you to buy into here? All you tell you is, I built that around the corners in Rochester, it's by Sky Haven, across from Albany, sixty trackers, it's a one-megawatt project. Learned a lot doing that. This is my Bright Spot Solar Panel, we're a trademarked company, so you're not just talking to some solar contractor.
Right, you're buying off the shelf, whatever you are.
Ask Janet, she's been seeing me at the registry for twenty-five years, so we're trademarked and we have our own solar panel. So we, honestly, we don't manufacture them, we pretend that we're the manufacturer, but the same way that Kleenex manufactures Kleenex, and Sherman Williams has their paint made by True Value, for those of you who don't know. I have a company that makes solar panels for me under my trademark, we're white labeled, we're registered with the CCC, which is the California, whatever, so you can look us up online. So, it's a little bit of a competitive advantage, means that I get my solar panels for a much better price than anybody else is going to get their solar panels for.
Because you cut out a third party.
Correct, I'm literally the manufacturer. So, I mean, I'm still paying someone to manufacture it for me, but I'm saving, whatever, five cents a kilowatt, ten cents a kilowatt, which, you know, when you're talking about five thousand six hundred watt panels, that's a considerable amount of money that I'm able to be more competitive. And then sort of my motivation here is A, to make money, and in fact, he does, he wants to make money, no matter how we skin the cat. But B, as a, you know, former member of the delegation, a large taxpayer here in Stratford County, I would love to save my county ten or fifteen grand a month in their power bill, if that's what I could do. And I would love to see you own the solar, because I do think owning it is in the better interest of the taxpayer, because eventually it's paid for, and this has a thirty-plus year life cycle. So if you do a twenty-year bond, you're going to have ten years where you run this. We also give you a, I'm going to say, I'm going to use the word Paki partner, in that we give you a full maintenance and warranty contract for the first twenty years based on owning what they call a solar rec. A solar rec is a federal program, has nothing to do with your net metering, has nothing to do with your net metering credits. It's basically like the pork bellies of solar energy, so people have, if they want to pollute, they have to buy a solar rec. We're able to register these S recs in the Massachusetts market, those are currently selling for about three and a half cents a kilowatt. So, on this project, that's going to be about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in revenue. And what I'm proposing is that Bright Spot Solar owns that, they keep that, that's our ale. It's part of our pricing model, so it's not, hey, we're keeping a hundred and twenty grand, we're going to price this so that you can post a bond, but for that hundred and twenty grand a year, we're gonna do the monitoring, come and grease the trackers. Doug, he calls me and says, hey, tracker row fifty-nine B wasn't spinning this morning, truck's going to roll, come out, make sure it's spinning. So, and we're local, so that's pretty easy. So, a part of my business model, unlike other solar companies, is that we keep ownership of the S rec for everything we build. And we own a lot of stuff, so I would not necessarily mind owning a hundred trackers at Stratford County, I own about two hundred and fifty trackers right now. So, I would have to get financing and figure out how we do it, have guarantees, have a PPA.
Yeah.
But I could finance this project, and we could, if we got a deal signed, still get the thirty percent tax credit. And if I'm going to own it, y'all have to move really fast. And that's not a sales pitch, that's not a nothing, that's a-
Tax credits go away.
Tax credits are going, they're not going away for commercial jobs the end of twenty twenty-five. On a residential job, if you're not online hitting the switch, the end of twenty twenty-five, no thirty percent. On a commercial job, which this would be, especially if we get a purchase power agreement, all we have to do is be started before the end of twenty twenty-five. The treasury just came out with new rules, it used to be a five percent safe harbor, so I could have paid five percent, and boom, got a safe harbor. Of course, it's not that clear anymore, now it's start the project. So I'm going to want to put some concrete bases in, dig some holes, pop, 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 all of which I can do pretty easily by the end of the year, and just-
How much acreage do you need to do?
A lot less than you would think. We did this on a twenty-acre parcel, and as you can see, we went around the wetlands, we went around where we needed to do it. We also don't, and this is the benefits of why you want to do a solar tracker. This is out in the Blueberry Patch. Yeah, on Shaw Drive? Yep, this is on Shaw Drive in Rochester. Took me four years really to get it approved, to get it interconnected. Learned a lot about how joyful it is to work with EverSource.
Yeah, we've had some, you know.
No, everybody knows.
Yeah, everybody, it's just the nature of these. So, in this twenty-acre parcel, how much is this producing?
This is producing two point four megawatt hours a year.
Four.
So we came on-
It should be like forty acres probably to produce up to five, right? I mean, be right.
No, what I would, what I would propose-
Frankly, the area used, actually used there is more like thirteen or fourteen, because of wetlands and that area Right. of the property that was not used at all. So that, what you're seeing there is about thirteen and a half.
Okay, thirteen F coverage.
Right.
Thirteen F, okay.
So it's really, it just depends on
Yeah, the layout.
The layout of the land.
Yeah, the wetlands and shoes and, I get it.
And so the trees in the way or not, and whatever.
Not trees, no trees, yeah.
Yeah, no, and that's just a a way to do it. So we've made five hundred and seventy-seven thousand kilowatt hours on this project since July. That's pretty good. So I'm not-
We had good weather too, but that's really-
Yeah, we had a lot of rain initially, we had great summer in terms of-
Yeah, so it's not like, I always just love that, I loved infomercials, guys selling consumer, I just loved it. We're not just the, you know, hair club client, we're the hair club president, we're a client.
Right, yeah.
Whatever that line is, like, I'm putting my money where my mouth is.
I need the hair club.
Yeah, I'm investing in this because I believe it's a good investment. And the difference between this solar and every other solar contractor that you've met with is, we have that panel I was talking about that's white labeled, I designed it. So, there's glass on this side, there's solar panel on this side. Let's just think about the fun of that. I'm making power on both sides of the panel, it's bifacial. And the reason we're so high up in the air is not just so your guy can continue to hay the fields, which he can do, we'll make it tall enough that he can drive his equipment under it, still hay the fields, and that means we can be closer to the buildings. We won't have to be two miles away trying to figure out the cost and the loss
Right.
of electricity.
Yeah.
The power loss.
Yeah.
So, you can continue to have walking, recreational looses, all the deer that the drone sees can still walk under these things. It doesn't disturb the-
Lots of buried bushes, keep them all happy.
You're well-versed.
Well, I've been doing this for a while.
Well, what I meant is you're well-versed on our property about the deer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
I've already reached out to Norrie Plains, who did this project with me, so I've worked with them for twenty-plus years on doing. So, and I've already talked to Mr. Parker about just tentatively what we're looking at for zoning, which is zero, and I was like, wow, this is nice. This is nice. So, we could get a layout and get a building permit relatively quickly. So, what I'm saying is, we can start this project in forty-five days, sixty days. If that's something you guys want to do, I understand, we may need a vote from the full delegation, and as a former delegation member, I understand the challenges with that. As a Realtor, whenever I have to walk into a room with like five siblings selling their house, it's like, I don't want that listing. Not because there's always one brother who wants way more money, and there's always one sister who says, my cousin Nancy said that. So I realized this will be a little bit about herding cats. And I'm just saying I understand that, and I'm willing to do that. And I think that I have the history and skill set, because one of the things with net metering is we're having trouble with EverSource, well, I proposed legislation, I got Senator Grata to sponsor it for me, and we passed it. So I know how to work with the different personalities. This will make money, because it'll save the county money. So even if you just post a bond, and we get started, you can get your thirty percent in cash still, as long as we're started by the end of twenty twenty-five, then you have forever to finish. Or, you have to be finished by the end of twenty twenty-seven, that's not a risk I want to take. Because this took me three years to get turned on. If we get to the point where we're going to talk about EverSource, I don't want to today waste a lot of time talking about the challenges with interconnection, but I just want to say that I'm really proposing four solar systems. Two one-megawatt systems, one five-hundred kilowatt system for the courthouse and the jail and the sheriff's office, and a two-hundred kilowatt system for the Hyder House. So the two-hundred kilowatt system for the Hyder House, I can apply for that interconnection, get that going relatively quickly. I'm deeply involved with the state and the rules for interconnection, and rewriting the, the-
So maybe, so maybe we have a multitude of different solar sites
Correct.
Right. And to service the buildings, and then that would cut down on, maybe, maybe cut down the fact that we've got to go to society, maybe they'll, maybe you'll avoid that.
Well, it depends, it depends on where, where you put them, and we might, it might not even be on their property.
Right.
Or their easement, their easement, right.
Yeah, I'm aware of the, I'm aware of the easement, that's an older easement. We also are able to avoid, most likely avoid alteration of terrain.
Yeah.
I just had a quick question, if you started one of them, could you give the thirty percent on all of them?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know if one's enough, because they're not clear on what enough is.
Yeah.
But to the degree that we've ordered five thousand panels from Jordan, and they're on their way here.
Right, right.
And we've-
And paid them.
And paid for them, and we've delivered metal, and I've put thirty bases in, then I can take a picture of my lull and my loader and
And some of each project.
activators sitting there, and I've got some dated pitchers, and some concrete in the ground, and some conduit run, all of which I can do relatively quickly, meaning that, that I would rather sell you a hundred and ten trackers than go out and knock on a hundred and ten doors.
Correct, I get it.
You know, so that makes it easy, and at least based on my preliminary math.
I'm going to send you back to the four, part of the reason for the four different systems has to do with the infrastructure.
Correct. So, Doug, he was nice enough to give me a tour, but you guys have all the transformers that you need. So even though you only have one meter for the prison and the nursing home,
There's transformers.
There's transformers all over the place. So we're going to put some solar in a line tap on this transformer, some solar in a line tap on this transformer, versus if you go build a five-megawatt project on the thing, it's too used to order the gear
Right.
for that system.
Yeah.
Then you got to order a transformer, and now we can just do an outside line tap, so it may even be a hundred kilowatts tapping in here, two hundred kilowatts tapping in here, but they're all tapping in, and electricity is like water, it just flows, so it's going to go to the place where you need it. So then when you look at your main meter, which is out by your transformers here, we're going to be a true behind-the-meter project. And what I'm going to say to EverSource is, no, I'm not exporting two point seven megawatts of solar power onto the grid and paying for a three-year study on how, well, what if you take no power? Well, I take no power, then am I sending you power to the grid? Especially where I was able to look at the generator situation here a little bit, the quote that you had from five years ago for your generators, and they wanted two hundred and sixty-five to do a study to tell you how to spend five million dollars on generators. Just give me a hundred grand, man, I'll tell you. There will be some costs that will be, what I'm going to say, at risk. Like, for instance, if we're going to have Norrie Plains do some surveying before we have a vote from the full delegation, that's a cost that I'd want, a risk that I'd want the county to take. I can't spend sixty grand on engineering and forty grand on electrical line diagrams, on a, maybe the county commission's going to vote, you know, Paki doesn't mind risking, you know, my time to pull a building permit or my time to go meet with a customer, but I can't risk a hundred thousand dollars designing your project. So, that is one of the asks, is that if we're going to go forward, and we need to have a little bit more design, and maybe we don't, meaning I don't mind going to the commission and saying, hey, we're looking at, you know, seven and a half million dollars worth of solar, and we're looking at five or six million dollars in batteries. This is what the project costs, if you bond that, you get thirty percent through this federal program. And I even do a not-to-exceed price. And I used to do a lot with JU with construction, and what they do is, they're building all the northeast, and they just go to northeast, and they say, this is your price, this is our cost, this is our margin, if we beat that price, we split it with you. So then there was an incentive for them to come in under that price, because they said, they made half of the money they saved. And I want to have some kind of contingency, because there's always, you know, hey, we need a new transformer, or that generator's wired this way, so therefore we got to wire it that way. And to be honest with you, I have no delusions that any amount of electrical engineering is going to figure out what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to be able to do it and to solve those problems. We are, so on that note, we are also a Tesla authorized installer. Primarily the house Tesla power walls and the solar roofs, and we could do their solar panels, I choose not to. But the good news is, I'm in their system, I'm vetted, approved, so I can order Tesla power packs. So, again, as a member of this county, who cares about my tax base, and cares very much about backing up the Hyder House, backing up your situation, if you do twelve to fifteen megawatts of battery storage, even if it was raining, and today it looked like a storm thing, I can push a button, I can fill those batteries up with power from the grid and give you two days' worth of power, or a day and a half worth of power. So, I know it works, because I did it at my house six years ago, it's worked for six years. I use two hundred kilowatts a day, I have a thirty-seven kilowatt AC solar system, I make more than enough power to cover my house. So, on your system that uses four point seven megawatts, I'm recommending a system that would make five point three megawatts a year. And that's probably where you heard that number, George. So I think that you do need five megawatts of annual production. And I can get there, where they used to have to build five megawatts of ground mounted solar
Right.
to get five megawatts of output. I can make two point seven megawatt of solar trackers and make five point three megawatts of annual production in the pond. Because I make power on both sides of the panel, so my panel, six hundred watts in the front, if I get a thirty kilowatt backside boost, I now have an eight hundred and eighty kilowatt solar panel. You know, just five years ago, the biggest panel we could get was three hundred kilowatts. So it's the innovation in not only the solar panels that I, I don't want to say design, they said, oh, I like this and I want that. It's, we run at thirteen and a half amps, typical solar panel runs at ten amps, because on residential houses, you can't bring more than ten amps into the house, or you have your inverter outside, so that's how all the panels are designed. Well, I'm not doing residential houses, I'm doing outside line taps, I'm not putting my inverter on the inside of the house, I'm putting in a pole and tracker, so therefore I can increase my amps by thirty percent. So it's every little bit of thing I could possibly do as a serial entrepreneur to make this more efficient and to make more money, that's what I'm doing, so.
Can you touch upon, you've talked about some of the tracker, but why it produces two point something versus one point one on the standalone that you had mentioned a few minutes ago on the, on the-
All right, so, a typical- All right, so a typical solar tracker might look like this logo for ours. I only have folders for our saying up right spot on the line. But this is my original real estate company. But if you look at that triangle, like it peaks from eleven to one and there's these two gaps here.
Yeah.
Solar tracker doesn't do that. A solar tracker looks like this. It's square. It looks like, uh, close encounter the third time, the mountain. So those gaps are filled in, so it makes power consistently throughout the day. So even on a rainy day like today. The tracker's turning, it's shining, it's at the right angle, and you make the most power when you're at the perfect angle to the sun.
It has a sense to the track. Even if the sun's over there, but there's a bright sky over there, it will point there to pick up more power.
I E, Bright Spot Solar. I thought BS solar, I thought that was funny.
I need to apologize to you because I've gotta be on a Zoom call at two thirty in Washington. Um, but I wanna, can I get you? Me set up like a workshop session, we can set up a workshop session in fact, talk about. You know, get into the weeds a little bit, you know, where you think, yeah, I can fit and go. You remember that? Yeah, Sean.
Well, one would be convenient for you with, the commissioners can be flexible with their meetings. At, at, at a time when it's flexible for you.
It, it's probably easier for us to fit your schedule.
Well, we, we, historically, the commissioners meet Thursday mornings. Um.
I mean, I'll be honest, I don't wanna wait till next Thursday and you guys, because if we're gonna do something, I can't stress this enough, we need to do it.
Well, it's fine, can you do Monday? Yeah, you probably sit down on Monday and do something. The biggest issue, Packy, is gonna be, it is the bond, but I, I don't know whether I'm gonna get. We'll have, we're two thirds of the delegation of bond and thing, that's gonna be the issue that we're really gonna have to flush out. Because I know that some of them would don't believe in solar, um, but.
Those are my people.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Honestly speaking, I, I think, and I mean this with all due respect, that you add. A lot of credibility to those people who, who might be hesitant.
Right.
You add credibility to that, because they, they, they will trust what you were saying.
Yeah, I'm gonna be on Monday. And I would just say to you, George, in the one minute that we have left, is that. I know you're probably not gonna get a bond this by the end of the year. So for me to basically say, hey, I'll come in, I'll set up a financing package, I'll set up a group of investors that I'll sell the solar to. And then the deal will be, hey, a PPA with the idea that the county can buy it in five years or six years. And what that's gonna do is allow them to harvest.
You know what that is? Citizen, that's citizens' energy. And that worked out well for us. That worked out really well. This is back.
You know, we can talk about all that stuff. We'll set up a workshop if you guys could be here on Monday.
I'm just saying, I think we can figure out how to get a finance.
You, you just, you just, you keep rolling me. I, I, or we can recess and you guys just have a. Good, and we'll just meet Monday.
Maybe unless you have more questions.
What time's convenient for you on Monday, sir?
Thanks, George.
All right. What time is convenient?
Wide open.
Um, how about, how about you?
It's like nine o'clock on Monday.
Nine o'clock on Monday?
Fine.
Great. Workshop session, uh, Janet Gil, publish that. Super.
Well, that was easier than.
It'll be a published meeting, so. Ladies, I'm making copies of this. Well, there's also quite a few acres that aren't. So there, it, it, some of what we need to talk about is placement. And, and then I need to reach out to, uh. Right, I need to reach out to, I can't remember their name off the top of my head, but I'll reach out to them about the usage of the other land.
And I have, well.
And, and there is some possibility of us trading something with Dover too.
I'm happy to talk to you whenever if you want to.
A couple of times in Rochester.
Well, you're welcome to come if you can, Monday morning. So it's up to you. This, it'll be public. So you're always welcome.
You, will you sing that to both ladies?
Okay.
I would tend to.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Yeah, no, we'll end the meeting and start again on Monday and as a workshop. Okay, so publish another agenda. Um, publish an agenda for, uh, tomorrow morning for Monday morning.
Yeah, yeah.
Good to see you, thanks. Seems to spend some time with my girl.
Looking forward to Monday. Good to see you again, sir. Uh, Monday morning.
Monday morning.